First item on tonight's work session is a discussion of lodging tax by Jennifer Homestead. Jennifer, how you doing?
Good. The mayor would like to propose an increase in lodging tax if it's something that everybody would be for, for the next budget term, but we want to discuss this before then. I have presented what the state lodging tax rate is, which is 4 percent. Baldwin County for our area is at 0 percent. And then I've listed the municipalitys south of I-10 that collect lodging tax and, you know, amongst those, the average is a little over 5 percent, some being greater than ours, which is currently 4 percent, and none being less than ours. Then I did a sampling of other areas in the state of Alabama and what they, what they charge as well, just so you could get an overview of the whole state. And then I gave you some figures down at the bottom of what we collected in fiscal year 2016, 2017, and what those revenue numbers would have looked like at the different rates.
So I guess, Jennifer, my very first question, I think you may have corrected this, that the, I believe when you sent this out probably a couple of weeks ago, when I was looking at the lodging rates, there were some rates that had just the city rate and then some of them had combined it with the state rates. So everything that we're seeing here, Fairhope being 4 percent, is the actual city rate itself.
Correct.
Not inclusive of the state or the county where it exists, south of the intercoastal.
Yes, sir.
So for instance, if you look at Spanish Fort Town Center, the city of Spanish Fort is collecting 8 percent at the town center?
At the town center, that's correct. 8 percent everywhere else is zero.
That's not so, 12 total there for them. There'd be 8 plus their 4?
Correct.
Okay.
For the state, yes, sir.
Okay. I, before we got going, I wanted to make sure that, and everything else looked to be, at least in the towns that I had some experience with, looked to be correct. So Tuscaloosa is 11 percent?
Yes, sir.
Are any of these cities, do all of these cities have a state lodging tax, a tax to them? Are any of them exempt from that?
No. They're all required to collect 4 percent.
Okay.
By the state. And then the county mayor, the county that they reside in may or may not have a county lodging tax. I didn't go that far. I just know where we're located in Alabama, it's 0 percent, however, if you do go south of the intercoastal waterway, there is a Baldwin County lodging tax that's 2 percent.
Sure. So I want to ask you this next. When you look at our fiscal year collections down at the bottom, those are, the 4 percent, 5 percent, 6, you just, basically, you just, you just ratioed everything up just based on what the 4 percent generated, and those are, should be actuals.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's based on, you know, everybody that we know that's paying a lodging tax. And I guess the reason I ask that question is, one of the things, and I don't counsel, I don't know where I stand on the lodging tax, I want to give this some thought. But I do feel strongly that we should enforce, you know, our, you know, especially the short-term rentals, the people that are renting, and I don't know that anybody's getting away with it. I know at one time, a few years ago, the police did do some investigations and find some people that were, you know, renting on the various rental websites, and we found out that they weren't licensed and we weren't collecting lodging taxes. So do we have any kind of estimate of what, how many people might be getting away with that? I mean, is there any way to know? How many people might be getting away with it?
We researched it, and I had Lynn put something together. Again, it's, these are rough figures, but we can get the internal thing turned on with Airbnb and they'll collect it for us. So I'm definitely wanting to do that. And I think VRBO just started something that they can collect for us. You know, this, this tax is a, is a pass-through and it's happening for visitors, so if we're going to look at an income stream, I think this is definitely where we would want to do it, because it's not money out of our citizens' pockets, but this money also can, some of it can be earmarked for tourism, which we don't have a budget for tourism right now.
Well, I would really like to close the loop, and I know that the state will administer them as well. The state collects for, you know, many, many cities, and I don't know if they keep a percentage of that for themselves, what the fee is on that, but I know that they do, and you just have to go on my Alabama taxes and pay your lodging taxes. I have to do that myself.
And we currently, through One Spot, you can pay your lodging tax online. We get that report monthly.
And we could require people to do that.
Correct, you could.
But if we, I just wondered how much the lost revenue there is before we look at an increase, how much lost revenue we think there might be if everybody that's renting short-term is actually licensed and collecting the property taxes? Because I don't have any problem running a sting on them and trying to catch people that are cheap.
I think we need to do both.
And, uh, catch them and-
We need to enforce what we have and also-
Put a hefty fine on them.
The conflict that we do have is our zoning ordinance, which hopefully Wayne will step in here for just a second on it. It does, I think, bring a problem to the table with our zoning ordinance.
Well, you know, I mean, only people that are legally doing it.
Correct.
Or illegally doing it, then that needs to be stopped, too.
Right. And we have, in the past month or so, we have had our efforts stepped up in looking for these people who may be renting unlawfully. We have had, had a few. We've, are utilizing various techniques to identify where they're at. But in the zoning ordinance, there's a lot of places in the city, if it's R2, it's not allowed. And I've had many phone calls over the past couple of months, when we go out and look for these places, that if you're in the R2 district, which is the vast majority of the city, you're not allowed to have a short-term rental. And that's primarily because short-term rentals start changing the neighborhood character. When you have people coming in and out in a well-established neighborhood, it can start changing the character of the neighborhood. We're very sensitive to that. We have complaints we get routinely about that, and so we are really making a real effort to find these. We're also interviewing for another code enforcement officer here next week, and so again, we hope to have our efforts stepped up. I don't know how many people are renting unlawfully, that's something we just don't know.
I mean, the people, if you do find them, are we giving them a citation? Are they having to go to court?
No.
Is there a penalty?
Yeah, there are penalties. The first thing we do is we have, if they're not lawful in that district, we have them cease operating as a short-term rental. If it is lawful, if it's allowed in that particular zoning district, but they don't have a business license or they're not paying lodging taxes, we'll make them go and, go and see Jennifer as far as getting it, getting that corrected and getting that right.
Any way to ask them how long they've been doing that and getting back?
It's on the application, and if they've never had one, I can go back to the time it initiated.
Right.
And I have gone back a few years on a couple of people.
It is, with today's technology, with all the different sites and everything else you have these days, it is difficult to try to catch everyone. I mean, some people just do not know it's unlawful, and some people probably do and just trying to, trying to get away with it.
If you've got the wherewithal to have a short-term rental, you're probably fairly business savvy, and you probably know that you're breaking the law.
Right.
I would say 90 percent of the people plus, if they're doing it and they're not licensed, know they're breaking the law.
Right. But our approach is kind of two-pronged approach. One is making sure you're not violating the zoning ordinance, but then secondly, making sure that we are collecting the revenue that is owed to the city, because we have a lot of people who are lawful, they come in, they do the right thing, and I don't think it's fair for people who don't do the right thing to get, to get away with it. So we are really stepping up our efforts to try to locate these and get these squared away.
And the short-term rule is only allowed in the central business district, right?
Uh, there are, no, there are a lot of other places, like for example, B3, there's several districts they're allowed in.
R4, R5.
Right. Which is more the multi, much more the higher density areas. The biggest issue we have is, is in R2, which is the vast majority of the city, they're not allowed, and that's, that's where we find most of the problems we have. But just about every other district, they are allowed.
I don't think we need to penalize people who want to rent for six months while they're building a house, and currently, the way our short-term rental reads is, it would be included in that if they're zoned, short-term.
The short-term is, in the zoning ordinance is defined as 30 days or less.
Right, so they're not affected.
Right. And it's, the lodging tax would be collected if it's less than 179 days.
Right. That's the part I think we might need to change, just because we want, we don't want to penalize people for, I feel like they're, they're a citizen, you know, for six months if they're building a house and whatnot, and maybe look at-
So right now, we're collecting the lodging tax if they rent for six months or less?
Yeah, we follow the state guidelines on that.
Oh, that's, is that mandated by the state?
Correct.
Then we can't change it if it's state mandated?
Well, I'm not sure if we can-
I don't know that it's mandated by state.
The 4 percent, you'd have to-
That's what the state collects.
No.
I'm not sure if that's what, if we can lessen the lengths that we collect upon or not.
Yeah, that would be a question as well. And then the question is also, do we want to, and then have all these different, you know, well, this applies to state, but doesn't apply to us, and this applies to both, and this applies to-
It can get complicated.
Yes, definitely.
Anyway, I want to open it up to the, to the council. I've asked my questions.
What, uh, what amount are we proposing to increase?
7 percent. I mean, not 2, 7 percent. So increase at three percentages.
My question, I know it's only a 3 percent, which is not a very large amount, but do you, you know, when you calculate the rates, that's just assuming, I guess, the same occupancy, but 3 percent increase on, on the rate being charged. I just wonder if you talked to the hotel, the Grand Hotel or any of the other hotels, if they think it would have any kind of impact on booking less rooms? I mean, I know it's only 3 percent.
Yeah, I have not gone that far.
Well, it would only be one and a half for you.
They don't, they pay half.
The PJ is only half of that.
Okay.
People do not look at lodging tax when they're, when they're booking where they need to go, and Fairhope is still, we would be below, if maybe equal some of the higher, you know, tourism type spots, so.
And I would anticipate over the next year or two, we'll probably have more hotels. We have had discussions with various architects and developers who are looking at maybe doing some boutique hotel-type concepts here. So I think over the next couple of years, you'll probably see more rooms in the city at some point.
And what do you propose the money to be used for? Why do we need it? Why? In other words, if we went from four to seven last year, that would have been roughly, just let's call it 600,000, about 570,000.
Well, I can tell you that we're trying to get to zero with the city budget. The more that we can, you know, increase income that doesn't affect citizens' pockets, that's where we need to look, because we're still subsidizing the city through utilities, and we want to get to a point where that transfer from utilities is being used for community development or not operating. And right now, it's going to operating by about $3 million, so.
And also, the mayor mentioned earlier about tourism. I think that's a fair, in my opinion, it's a kind of a fair compromise. Any additional taxes we collect goes back to tourism, trying to bring additional people back to the location, and hopefully will help them with their marketing efforts as well, as far as filling, you know, heads and beds and increasing their productivity, their prosperity as well. So I think that's a fair, in my mind, it's a fair compromise with that.
So you're saying spend all of it on more tourism, and then where's the net positive to, you know, to the budget?
No, you're not doing any right now, so you could do the 3 percent, you know, but, or less, but anything that reinvests, you know, hopefully more income. Again, tourism is money that's not being taken out of the citizen's pocketbook. So if we're spending a little bit, we're spending nothing now, to invest in something that we already have and making sure that we are capitalizing on the tourism that we already have, that's very good for the citizens. And investing into improvements downtown, which is a main attraction.
Any other questions, councilman? Councilman Boog? Councilman Conyers? Any comments, questions? Any direction to give? You want to think about it?
I'd definitely like to think about some. I mean, I, I agree with the concept of, if we can generate more revenue from people that don't live here rather than on the citizens that actually live in the city, then that's the way to, that's the way to try to go about generating it. But that money does not necessarily have to be earmarked, it can just come into the general fund.
It's y'all's decision. We're just making recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that-
I support it.
That makes sense. I would like to think about some more of that.
I don't think it needs to be spent on tourism, but I support it.
You could earmark it with what you want, but-
That'd be a different discussion.
And councilman, kind of, you know, some of the discussions we had was, as the mayor mentioned, downtown improvements as well. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do downtown, and beautification efforts and things of that nature, that I think would be, there'd be a nexus between, you know, lodging tax and downtown improvements.
But it can just go into the general fund, it doesn't need to be earmarked.
It's going to the general fund now.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'd say let's not specify it being for anything if we go that route.
And that puts us in line with a bunch of other cities in Baldwin County that I think Fairhope is a lot more favorable place to visit than other said places. I don't think there's a, shouldn't be an issue with charging the same percentage as those cities.
Again, people don't even, when they're traveling, it's just one of those things you expect to pay, and it's usually a big price tag.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thanks, Wayne. Okay, Fairhope subdivision, um, subdivision, substation relocation discussion. Mr. Peters?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I appreciate your time in talking about this at least one more time.
Maybe three, four more.
Okay. We don't have but one or two more times available, or it's too late to even worry about it. But basically, it goes back to issues that we talked about, or I tried to describe, and the size of that substation site. And, you know, initially, my thought was about protecting-
Let me, let me back up a little bit. We are not talking about Chirk Street and Nichols Avenue combination.
No, sir.
We are not talking about that. We are talking about the substation out on Fairhope Avenue near the water tank that's being painted. And I'm not exactly sure which substation we're talking about combining with that.
We're not combining anything. We're just relocating that substation north of the water tank. If, you know, and this takes getting the school board to allow us to buy a 200 by 300 foot piece of property that basically extends the property that the tank and the substation site are on now to where it goes back far enough to match the line where the water plant is, the property line of the water plant that is 300 feet north of the north line of the tank. And my initial response to all that was that when they do start painting the tank, and I think in the near future, hopefully, they will start painting the tank.
Are they going to start painting that tank?
I'm hoping they are. We're talking about that later.
A lot of people would like to know the answer to that.
I understand that. And then we're searching far and wide to get one.
I couldn't make it.
But, but anyway, the proximity of the substation to the tank and having it painted with that equipment there posed a threat in my mind to the reliability of the electrical system with debris that could potentially short out and damage that equipment. And, and if that took place, there would be some issues that we would have to address that, you know, there's, there's no timeframe that we can put on how long it will take to clear that circuit in order to feed it from a Volanta or a Nichols substation site today. But, but as I've been on the tank site a few times, there are some, some, uh, bus bars that have been purchased to add circuits to that left station. Well, when you look at where you're going to extend those bus bars, you get to a point where you're actually under the bowl of the tank and in a position where you could never hardly paint that tank again because of where those new circuits would have to be added to that substation. And so it just added, you know, in my mind, a need to look toward the future and look at getting that substation site to a point where we do have the flexibility to add those circuits. And the circuits that we have coming out of there now, one circuit runs east on Fairhope Avenue from Thompson Hall Road, there's a circuit that goes off of that or continues on Thompson Hall Road back to Quail Creek, and then it continues east on Fairhope Avenue to our other water plant in Walmart. And so that's one circuit that comes out of that substation site. The other circuit goes west, and it goes to the Satellite Courthouse and the New Cancer Center, and then Piggly Wiggly and Homestead Village, and then it branches off at Bishop Road, and it serves the subdivision west of Bishop Road, and then Wind Dixie and that shopping center there in Summer Hall, Thorn Glen, I believe.
On all of these substation upgrades, because that's what we're doing as a whole, are they all going to require a different location, or some of them will just be updated in place?
No, Volanta will be updated in place.
Okay.
But it requires all the other ones to be built before we can take that load.
But we're doing four total?
There, there will be four total substations. When we're finished, the, the fourth one would be the one at, at the Young Street substation where the delivery point for Alabama Power is. That will be eliminated. We have five now.
Right, we're going to consolidate the four.
The Church Street and the Nichols will be consolidated to one substation.
If you only have one that you're going to be rebuilding in place, we're going to need to look at three locations, right?
No, we, we think the site that the Volanta station on is adequate to rebuild that substation with higher capacity, but it takes having that substation out of service while they get that work done. And when that's, and the reason that it's important that we have these other upgrades done before that time is so we have the extra capacity at those substations to feed the circuits that are now served off the Volanta substation.
So let's talk about the Fairhope Avenue substation, which is the one we're talking about, maybe, you know, so how much expansion is going to go on at that? You mentioned three bus bars that might be directly beneath the tower in the future, you know, which, which hopefully will be 20 years from now when it's painted, because hopefully, we're going to finish painting it before that could even be relocated, right? Hopefully, that tank's going to be painted before that substation could be relocated.
Yeah, that's our hope. Our hope was it would be finished now, but yeah.
So what I'm saying is that, that painting will be complete, so-
Correct.
The risk is already there for that substation right now. The risk of something happening-
Absolutely.
During this painting exists, and that's not going to go away, because we're not going to stop painting the water tower.
Absolutely.
We're moving forward with that, so that's going to be painted.
You're absolutely correct.
So the risk is there. Now, there may be added risk if we put some bars, you know, directly underneath there if something was to fall off that tower, right? So is there no-
Well, now, we won't be adding these circuits to the existing substation or where we relocate this substation if we decide to relocate it.
Nothing's going to be added to this substation?
Not, not in, not in the immediate future.
No, but I'm talking about, once the substation upgrades commence, something will be added to that substation, right?
Capacity will be added to the Fairhope substation, to the transformer and the breaker.
Right, so how much, how much is that adding? I mean, I don't mean in kilowatt hours, I mean in-
Right.
This area. Are we talking about a 10 percent increase, a 20 percent increase? What I'm trying to get to, do we, we're looking at 20 years before that water tower's painted again. In 20 years, does it make more sense to take that million and a half dollars it's going to take to paint it? And, and, and who knows what the superstructure will be like then? Maybe we need a new water tower by then. Maybe we, we're building a whole new water tower. Maybe it makes more sense to move the water tower 100 feet or something. I, just kind of options that I was thinking of. Do we have to move the substation at, at the next upgrade?
Well, it, it's like some of the wastewater infrastructure we're talking about on Chirk Street, or, you know, while we're in there doing that work, you know, if, if we find ADA compliant sidewalks need to be replaced, if we find storm systems that are either undersized or in a deteriorated state, we need to replace those while we're there. To upgrade the Fairhope Avenue substation in place is pretty much going to set that location, I would think, for the next 20 years. Otherwise, you're going to be paying the same amount of money and probably more when you relocate it the next time. The cost of an elevated water tank today probably costs a dollar a gallon, that's a 2 million gallon tank, you're talking about $2 million. And there, there's no reason at this point to relocate or move that tank or raise it or anything for any purpose of the water system.
But there's not now, but there might be in, in 20 years. It might make more sense to build a new unless it's a public base.
And it'd probably make more sense to build it somewhere where the new, where we have new demand-
Right.
At that point.
So I, so what I'm trying to say is, how much are we really going to add to that substation? Does it make sense to relocate the entire, because we're talking about relocating an entire substation-
Right.
Now, how much does that cost? Because if that costs a million dollars, that-
It's about a million dollars.
So to relocate it's a million, to paint a water tower in 20 years when it's going to become a problem is a million, maybe a million and a half. You know, that's two and a half million dollars. Does it, does it make sense to move the substation? I, I, that's my question.
Well, it, it makes sense from a long-term planning perspective to be, have the capability to spread those. And if y'all read Lance Junkin's email back about the benefits that would give us, you know, if you've got two circuits going out of there now, and there's a short that occurs at Quail Creek where Walmart's out and, and the water plant's out across the street from that. If you have something that happens on the Wind Dixie circuit, then the Satellite Courthouse is out, the Cancer Center is out, and Piggly Wiggly's out, and Homestead Village. So either one of those two circuits has a short. Now, if one of those two circuits has a short that we have to supplement from another station, and we've been able to split those off into sharing that, we don't have to fulfill the entire circuit of what is there now with, with, in the West case, Wind Dixie, Piggly Wiggly, Cancer Center, Satellite Courthouse, and all the houses in between, with Nichols, we can shed just a partial load to, to bring it back online.
That's why I'm getting to, if we were, granted, we might need to upgrade it, but do we have to consolidate it and move it?
Well, we, we have to move it to be able to upgrade it.
Okay. So to do any upgrading to that Fairhope Avenue substation?
The only upgrading we're doing with this work is to upgrade the capacity of the transformer and the two breakers that serve each circuit.
All right. That's all that was planned for this?
That's what this, yes.
That's what this plan that we have before is planned.
Correct.
Option A has that specified.
And what I'm getting back is, this, this is a, an idea and a proposal that occurred a couple of years ago now, and then, and they bought the equipment to start to expand that substation, and it's laying on the ground now. But I'm just saying, there's no real place to add that added equipment to branch off those circuits and add capability for that separation of the east circuit or the west circuit today. Because if you do that, you're going to be right under the tank, and there's no way you're going to be able to drape, drape the tank next time you paint it. It's, it's going to be in the way.
Well, that's why I was saying, you're not going to be able to drape it the next time you paint it, but the next time you paint it, you're already a million to the good if you don't move the substation, and you're probably another million and a half to the good on the painting, just put a new one up or two and a half.
Do we know how, how old that substation is now? Do you have any idea?
I'm sorry.
How old the substation is next to the tank?
No, ma'am. I, I think it was 98, maybe it was. I don't know the answer to that, so.
My question on that was, we did, we're moving forward kind of on the option A, it was like a $9 million-
Correct.
Overall-
Yes.
-project on electrical. This is sort of a change order to that, right?
Yes, above and down.
Is it a million, million and a half, roughly, on top of that?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Not counting the purchase of land.
Well, no, I think, I'm saying a million and a half, that's, that would be counting the purchase of land.
Yeah, I think it was 800 and some thousand was the, the projected cost of the, the physical work.
What's our capacity on, on electric? Are we, we limited by capacity based on, on what we've got capacity to sell? Are we limited by the fact that Baldwin EMC and Riviera encroached up to-
Yes. The territory, we're, we're fixed with a service territory that is, that is fixed from 1984.
We can only backfill.
Right, so that's, I was about to ask if it made sense to push a substation further east rather than just expanding this one? Do we actually need a, another one further out? But it sounds like we'd be kind of boxed in.
Right. And, you know, I mean, we will do everything we can to make it work no matter what. I just think i- if we're gonna relocate the substation for these future considerations, I, I think now is the only time to do that. And, and that's the reason I'm bringing this up. And I don't want ten years from now, somebody to come up and say, well, damn, if, if, if we had a larger site for this substation, we could add these circuits. And when Quail Creek has a problem, Walmart won't be complaining about being out of power.
And do you, let me ask you that. Do you have to move the whole substation? Why can't you put just a, another mini substation to the north of that is where it would go? In other words, you have two substations in very close proximity as opposed to the expense of moving everything that's there right now. Can you just have another substation to the north as needed?
Well, if you're gonna, and, and if you do that, then we, we're already putting the capacity for the one we have now to feed all of that load and, and some future growth for that. If you build another one, you're gonna have to build another one that at least have the load, cause I'm assuming the circuits are fifty-fifty in terms of their demand. And I think you're looking at more than a million dollars to do that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you say moving that station?
Right.
Taking the, the equipment out of that station. I thought we had discussed a while back that the equipment on one that we are moving wasn't worth moving. We're getting all new stuff.
I think we're salvaging one breaker. We're buying one new breaker for the Fairhope Substation. We're buying a new transformer, which the existing transformer is ten KVA, the, the new one's fifteen KVA. The, the existing transformer at the Fairhope Substation will be our spare transformer when this is all said and done.
Let's assume, you know, money was no object, and we're gonna buy that, purchase that property in order to move the substation.
Right.
Certainly agree that the water tank and the substation there aren't real good. That's not a good planning site at all. But the point of it is, if you were moving it, you had the property, bought the property, had it right now, we were gonna move it. Would you take all that equipment with you? Would you just start from scratch?
No, you'd, no, you'd start from scratch.
So, basically moving is, it's not a function of moving other than you're just changing locations. It's not physically moving.
What it allows you to do, it allows you to start the process of getting all that built, so when the new transformer is delivered, they'll be able to set it in place with most of the equipment that is needed built into that new substation.
Again, we're not gonna move anything. If you, if you change locations, you're not moving anything. You're gonna start from scratch. Is that correct?
That's correct. There may be the one circuit breaker that, that's good. We may move that.
And I'm just referring to, by and large, that ninety percent of material that we have right now stays right there.
Correct.
And/or stays there until we make the new, the new one, and it's functioning, then you'll dismantle that one.
Yes.
Be raw ground.
It will be dismantled and abandoned.
I just wanna make sure I'm on that straight. When we talk about moving, I'm thinking, well, there's nothing to move, other than you're gonna move from this site to that site.
Right. Relocating the substation. That's what I, I, I think that's, you know, if you're, if you're looking at reliability, if you're looking at customer service, and if you're looking at options you may have five, ten years from now, I think that's the proper approach to take.
I agree with you too.
If, if, and, and if that piece of property is available, there, there's enough on that site to have a cellphone tower erected, and we can solve all the problems with cellphone antennas on the elevated tank in terms of access and in terms of the, what, what happens when we wind up trying to paint the thing. And, and we can collect, you know, percentages of those contracts to these companies that erect towers for cellphone companies on municipal property.
They would have to elect to build their own cellphone tower.
They would build.
They may say, we don't wanna build one. We wanna, you know, rent space on a water tower somewhere. I mean, I'm just saying, we can't force you to do that.
Not, not on that particular spot they won't. I don't think they're looking to, I think they'd accept a tower next to that tank in a heartbeat. And I, I don't mean that, you know, I mean, I, believe me, the, the, the process that we've gone through with this tank has, has been frustrating to me as much as anybody. You know, what we're able to do with that, and we can talk about that now, or if we can talk about it later if you want to, but.
We might wanna talk about that now, but I, I, I just, well, let's get, let's get past the substation relocation. I guess for, for me, counsel, I just, I wanna think about this. It's a, it's a big move. It's another big expense. And I'm not sure what the return on investment is. You know, purchasing land and moving it and spending a million and a half dollars, I just don't know how much increased capacity we're gonna get. I guess we could have maybe a lot more potential capacity, but I don't know that we were gonna get that much more capacity.
No, we're not gonna get much more capacity out of it. We'll just get more reliable service, and we'll get a, a, a system that's easier to operate and maintain.
Because it's not next to the water tower?
Because we're splitting the circuits to where we don't have to manage two circuits. We can manage four circuits. And i- if you have an outage on one circuit, it's easier to backbeat in from another substation than to try to capture the entire circuit that's there now.
When do we expect delivery on that substation?
It's a lot more money than I thought it would've been, and I'm not gonna sit here and try to pretend it's not. I mean, I, I was thinking for a couple hundred thousand dollars, we oughta be able to do something like that, but it's just not that. That's just not the case.
What is the timeframe for that substation, you think?
They, they have submitted some, uh, bid documents for the, the equipment that, that we're looking over, and they hope to receive bids on that in October. The, the delivery dates on those pieces of equipment are a year to eighteen months out. And so, of course, the first station we wanna do is gonna be both the delivery point and, at Alabama Power, and then, and then the combined station. So, the Fairhope Station, we, we may have a three or, three to six month window to, to look at. But if you're gonna have a new site, then what it takes to design the structure for what, for what that site will accept, you know, is gonna take some time, so.
Yeah, we're gonna have engineering.
If we, if we can have a couple of months, I mean, that, that would be about the longest time I would think we would have available to discuss it. And we can have Lance come back down and talk more about it if that would make you feel better.
I'd like to talk to him some more about it. I'd like to sit down and talk with him a little more.
Yeah, we can do that.
I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of it. Me personally, I'm just a little iffy.
Oh, I understand.
The next meeting. Otherwise, we'll be sitting here another.
Well, if we can talk to him before then, you know, if Kevin and I and you and Lance can sit down, let's, let's sit down and talk about it.
Okay.
Just brainstorm a little bit. Would that be good?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. Does that sound good, counsel?
Sounds really good.
Okay. Let's talk about that water tank, uh, painting. You know, I, I know everybody's had complaints from citizens, and I've said, you know, I've, I've passed blame on the city and said, you know, sorry, you know, we're, we just can't, you know, seem to get it done, and we've, you know, thought about, you know, calling the bond on it, and, but that might add a lot of months to it. And maybe if we had four or five months ago, maybe, maybe we would be further along. Maybe we wouldn't.
Right.
You know, I don't think any of us had a crystal ball, so I guess the question now is, Councilman Brown, I saw you bring up the question the other day. Do we, do we need to start thinking about, I mean, calling their bond and saying, hey, we're just, this, you know, we've had enough of these people. It has been too long.
We've contacted the bonding company. We have a claim on file, and we've spoken to the manager of that claim today. And the manager of that claim, you know, we have three options. We can terminate the contract, and we can have the bonding company be what would be the general contractor of, or, or the, yeah, the general contractor of record, and they would sub out that work to get it done. Or we could terminate the contract, contract with a different paint, tank painting company, and the, the bonding company pay us the difference in any cost that we, we incur between what we are prepared to pay the existing contractor and what it turns out to cost us when, when it's all said and done.
Do you have experience in, in that, which was, uh, which, I, I don't.
I do not.
I don't have the experience in calling a performance bond and knowing how long it takes the bond company. You would think that they're all about saving money, that they may be able to get a contract in there to get it done.
I just think the process is gonna.
Is that true? I don't know if that's a true statement.
Maybe give them a sense of urgency more so.
They, they realize that. We, if we terminate the contract today, the contractor has thirty days to get off the site. And, and within that thirty days, we can be trying to negotiate with other contractors. And I guess in our case, we may have to publicly bid the thing again, but I don't know that.
Would we have to do that if the, if the, um, the bond company came in?
If the bond company came in, I don't think, I think they would not have to publicly bid it.
I guess we should just wait to hear back from them, maybe, because the way I've been reading those reports, there's not much going on.
Do you know, if, if we're not subject to pay any more money than what we've already have exposure to through the public bid process? Right. We have not paid any, they have not made any pay requests.
Who would the bond company choose? I mean, if the bond company went out and hired.
And I've asked them, I, I've asked them several occasions. I said, what, what, what's, when are you gonna submit a pay request? Well, we're not gonna do it till the job's finished.
Might be bothering up your business.
I, I don't know why they feel that way, but that's how they feel. I'm sorry, Mark, for interrupting. If, if we terminate the contract, and, and if we negotiate with somebody that the bonding company approves to finish the job for us and, and agrees to pay the difference in any cost associated with this new contractor coming in, do we have to publicly bid that, or is that something we can negotiate?
That is something you can negotiate. The problem is, there's a couple provisions about termination, and one of them only allows you to, they still get paid for work completed to date. You're gonna get into a big bruhlahh over there about that.
And I, that's right.
Because if they hadn't been paid, they're gonna wanna be paid for the last year. But any new contractor that comes in, he's gonna come in and say, this worked so hard, I gotta redo the whole thing, and he's gonna, I'm just guessing.
I think that's where the bond company would probably step in and help out tremendously in that.
Whatever provision in the contract allows you, go to them and tell them, hey, we're not getting anywhere. You take it over, and you let them deal with it. How do they wanna do it?
And right now, we, we discussed those three options with the bonding company, and, and they were wanting to talk to the contractor before they called us back and gave us any clear indication of what avenue they'd want to pursue. I, I don't know that they're having much luck with the contractor either, though, from, and Jay, Jay may be able to speak to these. Talked to him earlier today when I was in the.
Oh, there's Jay.
Yes, I spoke to him. He said that he emailed him and called him, and he was shocked. He had not heard back from him. They said he had never had that happen to him before. That's what Traveler said to me today in a phone call. And he said he can't get him to return the call. He can't get the risk management guy to return the call. He said he emailed him, said we'd be in front of the city council tonight, and I, you know, talked to Richard about this beforehand. I wanna be clear, they did say that their responsibility is to make sure that the city and the taxpayers didn't have to spend any more money that was originally contracted. He said that's what the bond was for, and that's from Traveler's.
What about the period of performance? I mean, does that not count for anything?
He said that they, I'm just saying, he said that this whole responsibility on these bonds was to make sure the city didn't get charged any more than what we originally went out. And our understanding is, is we wouldn't have to rebid it, then it would go to the second highest bidder.
By that rationale, I'm just guessing, I'm not a bond attorney, but by that rationale, they could put one person out there on the job, and if, if, you know, and take thirty years to do it, and.
No, it, it clearly states in the contract that you have to have enough people to, qualified to do the contract in a timely manner. And even the bond company said we've been more than reasonable.
And that brings you back to where we are, then. It's, it's a time issue, not a money issue. It's a time issue.
Right, and they did ask us if we would be willing to consider termination for convenience. I, I, I don't think we should, because that lets them off the hook. And we would be responsible.
They don't wanna do that.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that at all. They would let the insurance company off the hook. I laughed about that.
No, we don't wanna let them off the hook.
But I, but I wanna be clear that, uh, I think we've been as fair as possible. And the most shocking part about it would be the fact that, you know, he said in all the years he's been doing this, usually if he sends an email, if he asks for a call, he gets a call right back, several calls, because, you know, this is a big thing. He said he hadn't heard anything. And his actual words was, he was shocked that he hadn't heard anything.
He is who? The bond?
He's the, he's our, our.
The agent.
Agent. Lee is the.
The bonding agent has tried to contact the contractor and hasn't heard back from him.
The vice president and the risk management guy.
Did you say, welcome to our world?
Exactly what I said. I said, that's exactly what we've been going through. And we've been promised things, and I've sent you everybody updates, and I hope you've seen them. We've been promised things all along, and they're not delivered.
I appreciate the updates we can get.
And I wanna make sure you, and I told Richard this too. We found out this week that the six other people that were promised to us several weeks ago, uh, who got through our background check, which will give us a total, twelve people on the shot, on, on the job, were sent to Mississippi. They were diverted to Mississippi. And so, I think that that tells us about how important this job is to them.
You got eighteen of them, and none of them there. They gotta be putting them on other jobs, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. And so, I, you know, uh, we can do what you wanna do, but, but I will say this, and I said this to Richard before we came to this meeting. And I don't think that anything short of at least starting the process of terminating them is gonna get their attention. I mean, your insurance company's calling, you're not responding to them. I think we need to strongly consider, you know, terminating the contract, at least starting the process.
Well, I think when we say that, you mean calling the bond?
Calling the bond. And they did say that, they did say the three options were to continue as we are, which is fruitless in my opinion. Or they would take over, which is called, just, that's simply called a takeover. And I asked them, is there a possibility that we could handle it? And they said, yes, there'd be a possibility for us to handle it. And I don't know if there's negotiations involved in that, but I think that we were probably at, be at a standstill from somewhere between sixty to ninety days as we transition, no matter what happened. And I wanna be fair about that. I want everybody to understand. And nothing could proceed until we got the pictures and stuff to whoever was coming in to make sure that they could.
And it will be a.
And that was our hesitation, you know, four, five, six months ago, is that we thought about a sixty to ninety day delay.
Yes, and to, to know how much the contractor has rightfully earned and, and what he deserves from being there, whether or not that other contractor can pick up where he left off and continue. That, that could be a, potentially a pretty significant process.
I think we should leave it right there where you have it, though, is in the hands of bond company who could come back to us with, you know, suggestions. So, I think you're on the right path with what you've done.
Okay.
And just keep us posted. I don't think we need to make a change of direction right now. We just, we needed to know where that was, and appreciate that.
All right.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Nope. I will say that kudos to the crew replacing the sewer line on Bayview. I didn't get to do that at the director's roundtable, but they, they worked hard and got rained on once, and the, the, are y'all familiar with where Bayview crossed the gully? And, and there was an old walk bridge or something. They, they found a foundation of something out there, and they found a, a, an abutment structure for an old bridge that was on top of the water, uh, the sewer line. And it, it was a good thing that, uh, we were able to get in there and fix it, but it is, it's now new and replaced, and then they did a hell of a job getting it done. So, if y'all see anybody out, Tom Jones and that crew, let them know. How much? Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
Okay, Mike, BBVA procurement card program ordinance overview.
Now, y'all have, y'all have, we had the presentation by the accomplice people, and y'all saw that. And I've got my sales pitch, but before I get into it, I guess I'm kinda asking, what kinda questions do we have on this? Where are we in your thinking on this? And, and maybe I can just be responsive to what you have.
I'll just do an overview of the first.
Yeah, well, uh, I, I'm not sure who, who put this on the work session agenda, Mike.
I, I asked for it.
You asked for it to do, to answer any questions?
Yes, because we have.
Okay, the reason I asked it is, I didn't know if there were certain council members that had, uh, any questions in particular.
No, I've got the ordinance on the agenda tonight for the first read, and so I just wanted to give y'all an opportunity, if there was anything I could do to give you the information you're looking for on this.
You know, I guess, you know, in, in thinking about this, um, I think that it is definitely, I don't think it can be argued that it's less of a burden on the employee. And I was, the employee doesn't have to come out of pocket with their own, you know, expense money to be reimbursed, no matter how fast it gets reimbursed, whether it be one week or four weeks or whatever it is. So, in that, in that regard, I, I think that's a really good thing. I do wonder, you know, you've said that if somebody need to increase their limit or need to establish a limit, they just call you, and you simply do all that. Is that really simple?
Yes, because I did that, uh, and when I was working in the finance department at Tuscaloosa, um, I guess nine years ago, they had this program already in place, and I, I worked with this, so I've seen it in action. It's, it's very simple to go in, just a matter of a minute or so. If somebody has, um, if they need their limit bumped up for a particular transaction, I can just go in and, and in a minute, be on the website and increase their, their credit limit on this, their particular card, and it's there, real time.
If you have someone that has this P-card and they are not planning any specific training or travel or anything, will the, will the card have a, a limit of zero at that point in time? Or will people have a certain minimum limit, you know, whether it's five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars? Will that exist prior to them, you know, making some kinda request for travel or education?
It totally depends on the employee and what their needs are. That's one of the great things about this, is it is customizable to a particular person. Like, if it's just somebody that maybe travels once or maybe twice a year, and they don't really do anything else, then that would be easy to keep that card at zero. And then when they get ready to make their reservations or pay for their course or stuff like that, then put that much credit line on their card, and then they can do that, so.
I, I wanted to look at this as more of an efficiency.
Efficiency thing for the department, so this would be, department heads would have it, and it would be for not just that person's travel, but. it, and it would be for not just that person's travel, but that department's travel, because that's what's taking up a lot of your time, too.
Well, here's the thing, is because these cards are so flexible, you can, it, it doesn't really matter how many people actually have cards. You know, we could have it so that anybody that doesn't travel, and we can have a card for them, but it's just turned off until they get to the point where they need it, and when they go on their trip. So it's not just a card for the department head, the department head will have a card for them. We can also have cards for a department that if you, needs to be given out for a specific occasion, but again, there's no reason for anybody that has a need to spend, you know, to pick up a twelve dollar piece from Jubileous Hardware.
That's really what we're talking about more. Travel is secondary to the incidental purchases that departments make.
But travel is, is kinda like, it's one of the things right now that cause a lot of problems, because it's so cumbersome to get that to happen. You know, they, they have to come by my office, they have to sit there where they make their reservations. It's just very, very, very cumbersome. And so this creates the ability to, to, to get these things done quickly, get them out of the way so they can get on to doing the rest of their job.
Mayor, I wanna hear from you as far as an example of making purchases easier.
My biggest thing, and it's the purchases, just like you said, Ace Hardware, or somebody's on site, and they need something, right now, if we don't have it on hand, and they need to go somewhere to get it, I mean, it could be very minor purchase, they have to go and get this card and get it purchased. I mean, it's, it slows down the whole process. So that was really what I wanted first and foremost, was just for that departmental rise.
There's a lot of ways we can use this. I'm starting small and simple, and then, and I've talked to several different cities that are using this, and I've got, you know, there's, like I said, there's a lot of ways we can use this, but we'll gradually move into this, you know, that's different purposes. So it just, the flexibility and everything, the ease of, of, you know, you don't have to go through all this paperwork. So it's just, it's a savvy move to make. You know, we're moving more and more into tran, electronic transactions. You know, just as an example, part of this Compass program, it's tied into the thing that we already have, the, the Spend Net Payable program, where we get vendors to sign up with them, and when we do a check run, their check goes to ACI to Compass, and Compass makes the payment. That's, that's the last thing we have to do with that check. It's immediate. Right now, we've got about, about eleven percent of our AP dollars go out through ACI, not a paper check. And that's increasing. About twenty percent of our vendors, or our vendor checks are issued through ACI payment. And so, and off that, we're gonna make this year about twenty thousand dollars in rebates from the program. This P-card program is encompassed in with this, so that's gonna increase our volume of dollars going through those two programs, which is gonna increase our rebate back. So that's just a nice little, you know, cherry on top. But still, the, the big thing is, how quickly and, and easily can we get transactions done that need to be done? The, one of the studies I was reading in preparing for this was, the, they had determined that the, the cost per transaction, when you use the PO system, is about a hundred dollars per transaction, and that's like all-in cost. The cost when you use a P-card for a transaction is about thirty dollars. So if you think about that, you know, that is, in it, of itself, is a time saver, because those dollars, that's, a lot of that is time. And that's something that, you know, all these departments, me included, we don't have enough of, so anything that we can do that makes things happen quicker, then we wanna try to take advantage of it.
How many transactions do you have in an average week? Rough number, that people have to come to you and get an approval, or you have to give them the credit card number, or whatever?
He has to do it, yeah.
How many, how many of those would you say you have a week that this would eliminate?
I would just say, often, no, 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 maybe like three or four weeks, something like that. But still, when it happens, it, it can take thirty or forty-five minutes out of their time, it can take ten or fifteen minutes out of my time.
That's where the thirty dollars comes from, a transaction.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so, you know, it's just, you know, we're going, just in general, we're going more to electronic transactions, and this is just a step along the way. Now, one of the things about this, again, is, you know, we talk about, one of the things I deal with a lot is risk management. And this, you know, anything you do, there's, there's a risk, and you put controls in place to mitigate that risk. You can't eliminate it, but you can mitigate it. This program gives me the ability to put those controls in place, so nobody's riding around with, you know, a ten thousand dollar credit card with ten thousand dollars sitting there, you know? It's limited based on their use and their need, and what I judge is an appropriate use and need.
How many cards are you gonna start with? And I know you can have the ability to turn them on and off, but I'm just thinking, it's definitely much more efficient, but if you have, you know, fifty cards floating out there, then, then you have to be sitting by your desk, just waiting for people to call you all day so that you can make adjustments to the...
Well, the way, the way I intend to use it, the way I intend to use it is, is, depending on who the person is, they may have a hundred bucks on the card, or they may have five hundred bucks on the card. So that means, if they've gotta go and to Ace Hardware and get a twelve dollar item, I don't have to do anything. So we're not, like, again, you know, you can't eliminate risk, you know, I'm, everybody's not gonna be sitting there with zero, and every time they wanna make a purchase, I gotta go in and change it.
Right.
You know, we'll, we'll base it on who they are and what their responsibilities are, and what their need is for that. And that's, again, one of the beautiful things about this, is you have so much flexibility of control. You know, I can even limit a card to just Ace Hardware, and that's it. So, anyway.
Would you be starting off with ten cards, fifty cards?
Well, I think what I'll, what I'll do is start off with a couple of departments, and just kind of start slow in there, and, and really see how the program develops, and see what, you know, what, what things we can see that that would be helpful to do, and kind of grow the program like that. And once we get to a couple of months, then you kind of spread it to other departments. But again, I wanna go slow with how much, you know, where I'm spreading the cards, what kinda dollar amount I'm working with, and, and just build into it. So...
Well, I just, you know, I don't, I don't disagree with anything you've said, anything you've said, Mayor. I, I think it's probably a good program, but I, the only thing I caution about is when you make spending money or easier, it gets spent. I mean, you just ask, ask me, with my, I mean, it's me, I'm a credit card user, 'cause I pay it off every month, but I, it's just a convenience thing, and rather than deal with a hassle or something, I might just go buy something new, because I didn't have to go deal with, you know, using something old. And I, I think that there's gonna be times when people say, well, I don't have to go through all that trouble of getting this, and, and, you know, and so I'll just go get new, whereas in the past, it, it's a hassle to get that done, so I'm just gonna kinda make do with what I got right now. And in that respect, you know, spending can increase. It might increase a lot when you have a budget as big as ours.
Well, that, I think one of the things that mitigate that situation is, we're gonna be judging what kinda credit line they're walking around with, and so, you know, if the choice is, go buy a new shovel, you know, that's, you know, ten or fifteen dollars, whatever it is, still you're talking about small dollar transactions. That's where this...
And I think that's where the cost is gonna go up, in this small dollar transaction.
But see, I don't know that I see that, though.
You'd be able to monitor it by card, still, so you don't know who's doing it.
Yeah. And see, that's the thing, is just because they've done it, number one, those transactions are gonna be smaller dollar transactions. You know, twenty-five dollars, seventy-five dollars here, you know, maybe a hundred and twenty-five here, but you're gonna be able to monitor those, and if somebody's abusing that, you can see that, you know, the department can see that. So again, you can't, you can't cover everything. You can't have a hundred percent control, otherwise it would take, you would have to hire a lot more people to manage it.
I do wanna point out that process and city employees being able to do their job efficiently is a big problem right now, and it's, it is causing, you know, poor morale. We are losing employees because of it. And I have very big, specific, you know, examples that I can go over with y'all, but we've got to make this, you know, just like you just said, twenty-first century. I mean, our processes right now, and I think Jillian can probably pipe in now, but we've got to do better. And we can, you know, say, well, what if this person buys this, or what if this person buys that? You have to look at the process, because that's where we're losing money. And that we really are losing serious amounts of time.
It's that time spent, yeah.
Yes.
And, and again, I go back to, we have such flexibility here, is that we really can, we really have more control over the processes, and the department heads can have that control. So this is something that, that makes it, makes us more efficient in doing the things we have to do. It makes...
Things that we already have to do.
We're, we're just, yeah, we're, we're, we've both, we've been through that enough.
Okay.
Counsel, any questions?
Okay. So you'll have, you'll have the first read tonight, and then we can...
Okay. All right. Well, we, we'll, we'll get another opportunity to ask you questions, uh, when Agenda Item Eight comes up tonight.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Lynn?
You can scratch me off.
Pardon?
Marcus and I have figured it all out, so you can just scratch that off.
You have figured it all out?
Yeah. Got it covered.
I'd like that. Okay. All right. Committee updates, any? Councilman Boone?
No, not yet.
Okay. Councilman Brown?
Uh, not this time, no.
Councilman Conyers?
No, not this time.
Okay. I don't have any at this time. I know that the department head met prior to this meeting, and apologized for not making that meeting, but it's just not at a good time for me on Mondays. What, any department heads have anything they'd like to brief the council on? Anything at all that might be really important that we, you think we should hear about? Something that we might have missed? I'm sure we missed some things.
A lot of it was just good news stuff, which we can, I'll have a little bit of my mayor report.
All right, we'll forward to that then. Okay, let's try to look at the agenda. Just real quick, I can flip this with my left hand, if you want to. Okay, we have some final adoptions on five, six, and seven. Item eight was what, Mr. Henson, like I said, that's the first read tonight. Item nine has to do with asking for an Attorney General's opinion, and I'm gonna wait until the council leading to talk about that, I wanna give a lead-in to that. Item ten, who will speak to item ten on the...
I will, Mr. Curran.
Okay. Just trying to write that down.
Will you take notes for check?
Yeah, will you take notes? I'm working on my left handwriting. Look at that.
Like that, can you read that?
That's good.
All right. Item eleven is authorizing the mayor to purchase recreational property. Let's talk about that for a moment while we've got some time in work session, because that was, to me, that was a really biggie that was put on the agenda. A couple of council members had asked to put that on there, and, and I would just, I asked the council and the mayor to, to, to think about, and I don't have a problem with you negotiating the price. I, I am concerned that what that price comes back at, and, and I'm speaking for me personally, doesn't mean that I'm gonna blanket approve a purchase of forty acres if it comes back with a really high price. And the reason I say that is, I know that land is getting scarce here, and I agree we probably need to move soon, but I don't know that we've looked at every available option to us. I don't know. I've seen one piece of property brought up to the table, and haven't seen any other pieces of a property explored, or, you know, I haven't seen, you know, had anybody say to me that, yeah, we looked at this forty acres, and this sixty acres, and this eighty acres. So me personally, counsel, I'd like to hear y'all's feedback. I don't have a problem with the mayor going and negotiating a purchase price, but...
I mean, all this is, is just making sure we're still on communication with, there's actually, it's a family of stakeholders.
Yeah, well, you might go get a great price for it. I mean, that's, that's great.
Well, I, I can tell you that there's nothing for this cost per acre available in, in the vicinity, especially something this close.
You already know what it costs? You know what they're, you already know what it's gonna cost?
Well, we, we know what their, the asking price was before, it's not listed.
Okay.
Okay. And again, this is just continuing the conversation, it's not agreeing to anything right now, but at least we can try to find out what the lowest he is willing to go, so there's something that could be presented to council. I did put in the budget, just, I think it's just three years, to pay for it out of impact fees for parks and wrecks, and this is not even depleting the whole fund for projected impact fees.
So are you gonna, well, I don't wanna get into your negotiation, but I guess part of it would be to, to try to do some owner financing to spread that out?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons why I think this is such a good opportunity, 'cause it wouldn't require us borrowing money, and if there's other land available in, in the budget that's further out, I think we always look at opportunities, but I don't think this one should leave.
I haven't seen anything that was brought before us, so...
Pete, he has, Tom has gotten a lot of this information, and this is still the best deal. So, and like I said, we're not, all we're doing right now is just finding out more information.
Is Tom here?
No, he's on vacation.
Oh, he's on vacation, okay. Yeah, I mean, I just, even if it's as simple as asking a Realtor what might be available...
We did.
We did? Okay.
Yeah.
I, I had approached the subject with a developer, and just said roughly, if you ever run into any land that's more land than you need, you know, and you don't need, let's say you're looking to develop twenty acres or eighty acres, but you found a hundred acres for sale, but you get a better price for purchasing all of it, you know, let the city know, you know what that cost might be, because you might, you might kill two birds with one stone, you may get some kind of village concept out of it, and you might get some land cheaper than you, you thought you, you would, because it doesn't have to be prime property for a, for a ball field on frontage, it could be property behind some other piece of property that maybe is not ripe for development, but it might be ripe for recreation.
I think that they're accomplishing...
I think we oughta tell everybody, we oughta tell every developer that if they're looking for land, they can...
I think that having this close to town, they, they have to take care of these parks, and it takes a lot of time to go out to Barnwell, for example, to, to take care of a park out there. I mean, this is, we're in terror on, on equipment, and we can accomplish more if the parks are closer together. I mean, that's, that's a huge, that's a huge expense.
I don't have any preconceived notions of where it may or may not be, whether it's way to the east or in Barnwell. I'm, I'm literally saying anywhere, just scour, you know, the community for that.
And I think that this also enhances and brings a lot of benefit to the, an area for where this land is located, so it's accomplishing a lot.
Item twelve is a resolution to select Impact Public Affairs Consulting to perform public relations writing. Who's gonna speak to that?
We've already met with a, oh, I thought you were talking to me, Paige. I'm not sure if, Mary Mullins might come, if she does, she can speak, but she has met with, I think, most all of you. It's just somebody that's gonna do the writing. We've had, we've contracted out in the past with, I can't think of her name right now, but she moved, so Fran, yeah.
Fran Morley, this would be taking over what Fran has done in the past.
Yeah, I mean, she's, she's helped us.
Paige, are you gonna be in the meeting?
I am, if you need to.
Well, I don't want you to have to stick around just for that. Do you wanna just come brief us real quick on this, then? Can you speak to that?
I can.
This was one of those, I wasn't real certain exactly what we're, what we're asking for. What types of writing are we talking about?
Like Mayor was saying, it's, you know, professional services that we use... Like Mayor was saying, it's, you know, professional services that we use to contract, writing services for our annual, or not annual, our bi-monthly newsletter that we have going out. And we're also deusing, utilizing the Fairhope Public Utilities mailouts every single month, which have been very, very popular. So different things along those lines. Press releases that coming, come about, you know, if we have any kind of articles, national articles that contact us, and just assorted writing that we, you know...
It's about the same as what Fran did. But we are also, on the agenda is, it's graphic design, but it's, they have a bigger scope of work that they can do. And it's all, I'm kind of killing two birds with one stone here. But both of these hires, I think, are going to cost less than what we have in place right now. And they're going to do more work.
That was my next question. So this is...
14.
You, you negotiate the fee schedules or the fee schedule, is that right? Clerk will come back to us for approval?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing executive contract with GMC for professional services for the Phil's Avenue lift station. Richard, would that, would that be you?
Yeah.
Richard Peterson, that is. Okay. Item 14, was this the second one you were talking about? I believe so, Mayor. The contract with Hummingbird and South to perform professional advertising and public relations for the Economic Community Development Department?
Yes. Y'all, y'all approved to, not to exceed, and we got that. And it will be doing just a, a bigger scope of what we have in place right now with graphic design and...
Layout, yeah.
Print, editorial layout, everything. But it's going to be more than just what we currently have for, for graphic design, all for, I think it's $2,500 more than what we paid just for graphic design last year.
Now, this, this is only for the graphic design. And they would put together some, whatever it might be.
Well, I think it is more than graphic design.
I mean, whatever it is they put together that, that's promoting the city. But when they put that together, we still have to pay to put that in print or media, whether that be video or print media, right? They're just, they're just getting the content together. And then we still have to pay to put it in a brochure, if it's that, or if it's a video, we still have to pay for, to the dispersion of that, right?
Yeah, printing and things like that, we, it's just like we have now, or depending on what we're going to do with it.
Whose place are they taking, then? I mean, we have a, you know, we have a nice Fairhope brochure.
Jason Thomas is actually who we use for professional services right now, who does design and layout for our Fairhope Connect, formerly known as the City Sketches. So he does, he was doing that quarterly, then we swapped over to bi-monthly. And so he does that for us twice a month. I mean, excuse me, six times a year. And that, we have two pieces. A nicer quality piece that we print, about a couple thousand, that goes in city facilities and our welcome center. And then we also print, like I said, in the Fairup Utility Mailer, a one-sheeter that goes out to 16-plus thousand customers. And that's not costing us anything more than just printing it.
Okay. Do we still have the print contract?
We'll have to look at that again.
I think that has to come up again, yeah.
It's not this very second, but we will be putting that.
I mean, that's usually the big one there.
Yeah. It's in the budget, but it's, we're just doing these contracts right now.
And Council, y'all step in if y'all have any questions about any of these in particular. Okay. Number 15 has to do with the marine pedestals. Council, I think I can tackle that. The original pedestals that we approved were, they really only supplied 30 amp power on each side.
One slip, that was the problem.
Yeah. And we needed to have, well, you needed to supply two slips. So what you do is you put a pedestal in between two slips, but you also needed the option to be able to supply 30 amp or 50 amp to either side of it. So, because you don't know what size boat, how much power a particular boat's going to need. And so the price went up by a couple of thousand dollars.
Right. You have to give kudos to Randy, because he saved the deal. These guys wanted to go up more than that. And they said, "Oh, but you're getting 10," so...
Yeah. I, I looked these up myself and thought that they were, were very conducive to what we're trying to do and, and made sense. And I thought the additional, I actually am a little bit pleasantly surprised by, by the price of them being as low as, as they are. We are spending a lot of money out there. Okay. Item 16, if anybody has any questions about pest control, who would answer that? Would that be you?
Me and Jill, we can probably handle it.
Okay. Item 17, who would talk about that building facade repair at the pool? Richard Peterson? My handwriting's getting better.
Assistant.
Okay. Item, item 18 is for citywide resurfacing and striping projects.
Richard Johnson.
RJ? Okay. Jeff would be here for number 19. Sorry, clerk's helping me out a lot. Okay. 20, the diesel forklift for the warehouse.
Billy, not handling that.
Okay. I would imagine you're going to get the standard. Was that budgeted? And is that, you know, above or below budget on most of those purchases like that? So...
It's long-term. Who's the answer?
Oh, it is. Maybe, maybe we won't ask that then. Okay. Item 21, I'll handle that. Item 22 is going to require quite a bit of discussion on that transfer and assignment of shucks. Mayor and I talked about that Friday. I've had further discussions with city attorney and with the seller and, and the buyer on that. So we'll just, I don't, I don't think that that's going to be a simple discussion tonight. Item 23, the playground. Okay. Item 24 is a request. That's it. Did I leave anything out? Anybody have any questions? Are we adjourned? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn right now. We'll try to come back in four, five minutes for the regular meeting.